Okay, I'm gonna call our Village Board and Finance Committee meeting to order. Roll call please.
Nyla Frye.
Here.
Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Bill Williams.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here.
Erin Moran.
Here.
Joe Zitzelberger.
Here.
And Sam Kaufman.
Here.
Okay, first thing is confirmation of open meeting compliance, public postings, official notices, online availability.
I can confirm that the draft agenda was published in the Wannakee Tribune on 10/14. Final agenda was posted in all three official posting locations on 10/12 and 10/13, and the final agenda and packet were made available online on 10/12. Two minor audience recommendations is to please be sure that you sign in on the sign-in sheet with your name, address, and municipality for accurate record-keeping. And then the second item would be to, if you want to speak at the public comment section, please turn your public comment card to me prior to public comment.
And one clarification, Chris, you mentioned Finance Committee. What we've done thus far is just called to order the Village Board, and there will be, after public comment, we'll be calling to order the Finance Committee.
Perfect, okay, public comments.
Laura Kramer at, Lauren Kramer, sorry, at 2410 Kilcarney Way, Wannakee. Yeah, either way, you can stand where you're at, or you can go to the podium, whichever you prefer. You get three minutes.
Listen, to the Village of Wannakee Board, my name is Lauren Kramer, and I'm a parent of a child who's a player on the Wildcat Youth Hockey Association. I've watched the October 3rd Board meeting, honestly, more times than I can count at this point, and I wanted to take the time to clarify some concerns that were brought up by the Board members. First, I would like to point out that the sale of alcohol at the Wildcat Classic has been held annually since 2017, with the exception of 2020. There's been no history of any drinking tickets, police citations, or any other disorderly conduct associated with any past event. The Wannakee Police Department has never taken issue with the event, nor has the Ice Pond. The sale of alcohol at the Classic is permitted by the Ice Pond, who understands the responsibility and liability it has with such an event and would never permit the sale of alcohol if there was any issue. As Mr. Zitzelberger, sorry if I completely tortured your name, stated, "If the families were okay with it as a fundraiser, he would be too." I assure you, as a mother of a skater, a former Wildcat Board member, and a Wannakee community member, I, along with so many other families, are more than okay with this, given the precautions that the organization has taken to ensure the safety of our skaters at the Classic. Second, I understand, Ms. Frye, the concept of you need to talk the talk and walk the walk. I can appreciate this. However, I would like to point out that this may not be such the place to take such a hard stance. I am not aware of any other community liquor license having ever been denied in years past. These would include events such as Walktoberfest, Wannafest, Wannaboom, and the St. John's Picnic, just to name a few. There are minors present at all of these events. These events take place at community parks, very close to schools, and even on church grounds. I believe that denying our license, yet approving the others, is setting a very dangerous precedent. If the same standards are to be applied, that there will be the denial of liquor license where there's a presence of minors, this is going to go into a very slippery slope argument and will set a precedent that cannot be sustained due to unreasonableness. To simply target the Wildcat Classic is not in line with the past decisions of this Board who have previously approved our own license applications. This is starting to create a discriminatory feel against the Wildcats in which we are not being treated the same as other organizations. Mr. Williams made mention of hot-headed hockey dads not needing any sort of alcohol at hockey tournaments. To be fair, this is a rather derogatory and stereotypical comment. Regardless, I need to point out that the Wildcat Classic is in no way a tournament. Scores are not kept at any point during the day. The Classic is essentially an organizational-wide celebration that we fundraise for the Wildcats. It is entirely in-house players that are, there are no outside skaters from any other team or organization who's allowed to participate. Older players coach for the younger teams, and the only people present at the Classic are families involved in the part of the organization. There is no hostility, no competition.
That's time.
I was told I could go over. Thank you very much. There is no hostility, no competition, nothing to warrant the concern for violent behaviors that would be escalated with the presence of alcohol. It truly is an organizational fundraiser encouraging the families to get together before the season officially begins. It is a once-a-year annual event that we host for the club. The Kramer family has been a part of the Wildcat family since moving to Wannakee in 2020, and family is exactly what the Wildcat organization is. Both my husband and I have served as Board members and are extremely involved in the program. I understand that having alcohol provided at a youth event might be off-putting to some, however, the reasoning behind it should also be noted. The Wildcat Classic is a fundraising event for this organization. The profits earned from the sale of alcohol go directly back to the club. Hockey is unfortunately an expensive sport. The profits for the Classic, including the sale of the alcohol, goes towards keeping costs down for the families who are part of the Wannakee community. It also provides scholarships for skaters who cannot afford dues. We're roughly estimated to bring $2,500 in from the sale of alcohol, and this is an estimated three to four skater scholarships. This is what the money goes towards. It's not about adults having fun at the event, but it's about bringing money back to the club to help skaters who are a member of the, part of this community. While Mr. Hertzberg recommended families walk across the street to Octopi, this is counterintuitive when you're looking to fundraise and bring money back to the club. Having a drink at Octopi unfortunately does not provide any benefit of monetary contributions to the Wildcat Classic. Finally, Ms. Frye, you mentioned that children learn through modeling the most, and I respect this opinion. This is exactly why I have my children in hockey, because of the life lessons it's teaching them. The Wildcats have brought my boys a sense of discipline, teamwork, and accountability, just to name a few. Modeling concepts can also be seen in ways that the Wildcats have taken steps to ensure that alcohol is kept away from minors at the event. It is also why the Wildcats are asking for the permissibility to fundraise at this event. It's teaching children to help and give back to their community, which is what this event is all about. Lastly, I have taken the time to talk to the Wannakee Cares Coalition to explain the discrepancies and inaccuracies of the previous Board meeting. Ms. McGrath and I told me that the conversation she and I had provided a new perspective on the event for it. It's not just a tournament, it's not a tournament at all, it's actually a party, a fundraiser. And I would just really like to say that approving this is helping keeping the cost down for the Wannakee families and really helping to provide the opportunity to bring hockey to kids who cannot necessarily afford it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Salisbury at 506th Street, Wannakee.
Hi, my name's Matt Salisbury, I'm a Wannakee resident and also the, on the Wannakee Youth Hockey Association Board and as past president. Our hockey association serves the families of Wannakee, DeForest, Windsor, Lodi, and Poinet. We've got around 270 skaters that make up roughly 21 competitive teams across our age levels, 6U to 14U. On top of that, we're a volunteer-based organization, and our adults are just as much part of the organization as the kids, whether it be a coach, team manager, Board member, other volunteer, or just hockey parent, adults are very involved in our association's community. So, while we have youth in our name, our club is not just composed of children. The Wildcat Classic is not a youth competitive event, rather, the Wildcat Classic serves as our annual club festival. While there's hockey going on for our youngest ages, there are no scores being kept, and no teams are invited from any other club. And to promote our sense of volunteerism, our older skaters help with the event as coaches and referees for our younger skaters. This event allows our families to come together under one roof, hang out, socialize with friends, and meet new club members. We've been hosting the Wildcat Classic since 2017, and we've applied for a temporary operating license since 2018. Every time we've applied, we have worked through the requirements of the license with the Police Department, successfully secured the permit, and implemented the sales of alcohol safely and lawfully without incident. We're hoping we're allowed to do that same this year. I do have some concerns with what went on in the Board meeting the last two weeks ago, and I emailed the Board members about that, but don't need to talk about that right now. In the end, my main concern is that our track record shows that we're able to handle this, and I'm hoping that we can still be judged equally and to the same standards as the other, other events and organizations that Lauren mentioned previously. Thanks.
Thank you.
Michelle McGrath at 108 Dunwoody Lane, Wannakee.
Sorry, I'm just standing here for this side. Good evening, I just wanna start off and thank the Board and the Wannakee administrators for allowing us this opportunity to have a great conversation around a very important topic. I also want to thank Lauren for contacting me, Laura, Lauren.
Lauren.
Lauren, for the conversation we had as well, to talk more about the specifics of the event. But for people that don't know me, I'm Michelle McGrath, I'm the Wannakee Community Cares Coalition Project Coordinator, and our coalition is all about safe and healthy Wannakee, keeping it resilient and healthy, and around alcohol, drug prevention, and mental health. I'm here with some of our coalition members as well, and our coalition's built up about 100 community members from around Wannakee. And I wanna give you just a little bit of insight, I was here a couple weeks ago talking with the Board just about our concern with, with the license. And ultimately, the reason I'm in my position right now is, two years ago, Wannakee as a community wrote for a Drug Freeze Community Grant, and it was a $2.5 million grant, a significant amount of money, because we saw challenges in 2018 from our high school, middle school students that were struggling with alcohol consumption at a high rate, as well as other vaping and things like that. We received that grant, and then we're able to go and look at our community as a whole and figure out how we might bring perspective as a community, work in our schools, to help remedy that. We just did another recent survey in 12 focus groups at the high school last year and found out that our consumption went up from last year. And so, it is still a significant problem. One of the things that we've done as a coalition is, this past year at the high school, and I mentioned it at the last Board meeting, is that we brought in a national speaker to speak to all of our students to talk about making positive choices, and not to drink, not to drink and drive, and not to get in a vehicle with anyone that's been drinking. And it's so hard for me to say that we're gonna make, we're gonna expect our students to do that and not expect our community to at least have a conversation and talk about how we might change our perspective, because ultimately, things might need to change, even though things have happened in the past, just given the data that we're seeing from our students. I also wanna talk a little bit about our festivals, I know that has been mentioned. So, a couple years ago, our coalition began working with our festivals about keeping them safe. And we had, given the data, we reached all of our festival coordinators, met with us this past year, and we spent months talking about how can we make our festivals safe? So, we worked with all of them, Wannafest, Wannaboom, Walktoberfest, St. John's, all of them. And all of those tents or the places that served alcohol were fenced in, we, our, oh, am I able to go over it? I almost made it quick. But we paid for security officers to come in, we gave them ID scanners to keep those, those places safe. And none of those activities were around necessarily a spectating event for youth. So ultimately, I mean, I admire what the Wildcats are doing and what any of our community organizations around sports or co-regulars are doing to raise money, provide equity and scholarships, but I really think that we need to collaborate and really rethink how we might set different priorities for our community, given the data that we've seen come out of the high school. We all want our kids to be healthy and safe and resilient, and it's gonna take all of us to make really important decisions to do so, and I hope you make good decisions doing so as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert McPherson at 1703 Alexandria Court, Wannakee.
Hi. So, I'm here as a parent of a 6U skater in the Wildcat organization. I'm not here representing them. They do great work, and I appreciate the work that they do as a parent, and I don't have the time to volunteer at that level, so I think it's great. I come out of concern, Joe's comment at the last meeting kind of struck out, if parents are okay with it, then he would be okay with it. I'm a parent, as I said, I have a six-year-old skating, I'm okay with it. I'm not a hot-headed hockey dad, in fact, I'm probably the least violent hockey dad that you're gonna see, because I know that my kid is six years old, and she's just out there having fun. My concern is, and I'm going to echo some of the points that were already raised, is that we have a lot of other events in this village that do have alcohol that are open to the public, which is a key distinction, I think should be made here, and the fact that, you know, we encourage that you should go drinking at these events, and that it's very strange that one event gets singled out versus all the other events that occur within this village for this. I appreciate the comments that Ms. McGrath just stated about how they've been working with these other places to do that, but I, last I checked, it is still the Village Board that approves these licenses and not an outside third-party that approves licenses. So, if we're going to start setting different standards that are not codified within, you know, at a village level, so that everybody knows the rules that they need to play by, I think that you really are setting us up for failure, because other groups that just aren't in the know, maybe you need to be in the Chamber of Commerce, I don't know, but if that's what it takes to put on an event that has alcohol, I think it's a little, a little strange that this is the one event that gets targeted. So, interesting hill to die on as a parent to see this happen, that it's this event that they're going after, but it would just be appreciated, I think, for the community if the Board would make it very clear what is and is not acceptable for future events if, for some reason, they decide to vote this event down. And I think that you should also be prepared for potential legal ramifications if you vote this event down. Make sure you're really buttoned up, because I don't want my taxpayer money going back to my own organization if they have to sue the village, because for some reason, we're being singled out for a liquor license, I'm sorry, temporary liquor license. Thanks.
Thank you.
Carrie Kane, 6467 Old 113 Road, Dane, Wannakee School.
Hello. I just found out about this a couple days ago, and I'm gonna be very honest, I don't have all the information, but as a parent of three kids that graduated from Wannakee High School and the founder of the Project Bray Program, last February, I had my last drop of alcohol because I had a very close friend that I just wanted to support. And after hearing, you know, just this whole Michelle McGrath and what WCCC is doing, and they were able to receive this grant, I'm, I'm here to just back them up, because I feel with all my heart that it's all about making sure that we mentor and we're good role models for our community. And I do believe, what everyone spoke on, that they are responsible individuals and they don't have, you know, a history of any type of, you know, the police being involved and things like that. But I also know that we were given this grant, and we need to be responsible with that, and there was a reason. There's a reason that our community was given that grant. And so, as a mom and a community member, I work a lot with the teens, with the mental fitness for teens, and I just, I just wanna make sure that you guys do your due diligence and make sure that we have a plan in place. And I understand this as a fundraiser. For instance, Wannafest, we played, my band played there, and Ellen Schaaf did the numbers on the amount of alcohol consumption. A lot of the alcohol this year was, the beer, I should say, was non-alcoholic, and it was the first year that they actually sold about half, maybe a little less than half was NA beer. And so, if it's a fundraiser and you're able to sell non-alcoholic, and it's going to a good cause, I think that that's something that we should talk about, is possibly having, you know, non-alcoholic, because I think it's the same cost, if I'm not mistaken. At Neil's Liquor, they have the NA available, and it's just as good, because I know, I've been drinking it the last six months. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Todd?
Wanted to give the Board a update on some of our work with Ho-Chunk Nation. As you know, you approved the flag raising for Native American Heritage Month, which is in November. On November 1st, we're gonna be celebrating the flag raising with Ho-Chunk leadership here at Village Hall, followed by a trip up to the "Welcome to Wannakee" sign, the only Wannakee in the world sign, up by rhexes. All four signs are going to have a couple new placards added. So, to give you perspective, picture the sign, in the middle is the earth, the Wannakee dotted in the earth. On either side will be two new round placards, one featuring the village's own logo, and then the other featuring the Ho-Chunk Great Seal. They will be placed at all four signs. And then, we also completed one of our University Year projects, a brochure, history of the Ho-Chunk at the, on the lands where Wannakee sits. So, that's now published and available around the community. And then finally, and this, this is a pretty, pretty exciting thing for the village, is we received an award from the Wisconsin Policy Forum. The award is, let's see, is for efforts to advance racial equity specifically in relation to our work on our Ho-Chunk relationship. Chris and I, along with Ho-Chunk Leadership and University Year Leadership, will be going to a banquet in Milwaukee to accept the award in mid-November, but this is a special recognition for you and your work to support the relationship that we've built with our Ho-Chunk friends now.
Okay, so I'll just make my comment in regards to that, it's not just the Board's work, it's our staff's work and our community's work, not, not just us. Everybody has to be involved for a change to be made, so, thanks, Todd. Okay, next, we're going to go to our joint agenda items with the Finance Committee, so I'm gonna turn this over to our Finance Committee Chair, Joe Zitzelberger.
Thank you. I will call this Finance Committee meeting to order. Renee, roll call please.
Sure, Joe Zitzelberger.
Here.
Chris Zellner.
Here.
Gary Hertzberg.
Here.
Eldasso.
Here.
Paul Carterella.
Here.
Jim Elvakrog.
Here.
Sarah Whitley.
All right, and we'll start with, I guess, item number two on here, discuss and take action on the Village of Wannakee budget policies. Renee?
So, I wasn't gonna spend a lot of time on the policies, but I'm happy to spend more if, if the Finance Committee would like to. So, we've had these policies for, you know, 15, probably close to 20 years, in terms of our fund balance and our debt policies, and, you know, I think for the most part, they've been working very well. Just annually, we just kinda reconfirm them, but if anybody wants to go over them in detail or propose any changes, we could do that at this time.
All right, we'll start on that end with Jim, any questions or comments?
I went through them, and they looked very thorough. I did not identify anything that I think needs to be updated.
Okay.
Looked really good to me, really good details in there, so thank you for putting those together, so, no other, no questions.
Yeah?
So, I do have one question.
Yep.
Probably more than that, but I'm gonna hold it to one, one topic, and that's what happens when the fund balance exceeds the 20% to 25% of the subsequent year's operating expenditure budget. So, we get to the end of the year, and it all of a sudden comes in at, in at 30%, or some other number, what happens to that excess?
So, for the past number of years, and we'll see that when we do the, the budget slides, we have been over around 28, 29, 30%. So, there is no current policy on what happens to that difference. What we've usually, for example, last year, we knew we were gonna have a significant difference, the Board approved paying off some debt early with that, because fund balance generally is only used for one-time expenditures, you don't wanna dip into that too much for ongoing costs. So, many times, we've identified some one-time costs to help spend that down. So, the, the policy is a goal, it's not, at this point, a hard and fast restriction.
Yeah, I understand that, and the reason I'm asking the question is because when I look at the, some of the numbers, I know it scares people, but the 2022 budget, it was planned that expenditure in the general fund would exceed revenue by $410,000 dipping into the fund balance, that was the plan. As it turns out, it's gonna be just short of $100,000 budget, or planned, right now. So, there's roughly a half-million-dollar swing in what was budgeted to what's actually gonna happen based on your current projections. That's why I asked the question, about what happens to the excess of that half-million dollars at that point in time? That's what I was asking.
Right, that is a very true statement, because we do budget fairly conservatively on our revenue side and on the higher end on expenditures, so we are usually successful in beating the numbers in our budget. But, right, at this point, there's no, like I said, there's no policy on what to do with that money. Usually, the Board will just either spend it on capital costs, or again, one-time things.
I'd add that, we have also, over the past couple years, and Renee can help me with the numbers here, but specifically applied fund balance for, I would call it an element of tax relief specifically, as it related to our pay-go capital projects. So, what otherwise would have been fully levied for a couple of million dollars of pay-go work, is that, is that close?
Um, yeah.
We've applied 100, in fact, this year, a couple hundred thousand dollars of fund balance, which end result occurs in tax relief.
I would just, I, I'm trying to remember all the different things, but one of them was when we did, we did a tennis courts, that was a one-time expense that we needed to have, and there, I think it was.
That's right, that was $400,000 or so for the park tennis courts that we took out of there. Like I said, the paying down of the state trust fund loan last year was about $800,000. So, we try and identify one-time costs to help spend that, or as Todd said, we have used some for just strict tax relief, which you'll see in the 2023 budget as well.
So, since I'm not asking a question, if you have another question, feel free, I mean, don't, don't knock, this is the time for us to have this discussion.
Well, you mentioned that, and I recall, even a thousand-dollar transfer to pay down debt service, and you go to the debt service and it says, the debt service should align itself with whatever fixed asset was bought, and that makes sense, but now we're prepaying on the debt service.
Well, that was a, an exception, because we were going to pay that state trust fund loan with the proceeds of the sale of the old library, which did not occur due to COVID, and now we've repurposed that building. So, the funding source for that state trust fund loan, that was never intended to be a long-term loan, that was the, the little gap at the end of the project that we were relying on the sale of the old library to pay off within a year or two of, of its issuance. So, that's, that was a little bit different situation.
Okay. So, as long as Chris opened the door for me, one other topic, then just to take you to your floor for a second, and that is, and I understand the pay-go, because that goes back to when I was on the Finance Committee many years ago, I understand all that concept. And I forget what the equipment number is offhand, for example, or the capital transportation expenditure level of $1.2 million, I'm not sure what's in that.
Yep.
Are those assets that are less than the $1.2 million, are they still recorded someplace and tracked by the village? Or is it because there is, it's below that minimum, and I know that's a big number, if it's below that minimum, it's not tracked?
Um, we do track, so for equipment-type assets, anything over $5,000, so, under $5,000, we don't track, and then infrastructure and roads, those are still tracked, it's more on a composite depreciation rate, but we, so, you know, maintenance and repairs aren't, you know, those are not capitalized, but all equipment and assets over $5,000 are tracked.
Okay, and that's actually what I was getting, was the $5,000, was my next follow-up question, which you already jumped to my question, which is fine, and is that something that should be in there, that everything over $5,000 should be, still be recorded as a?
Oh, in the policy?
In the policy.
Yeah, I'm trying to think, I mean, because we have a whole capitalization policy, these are just kind of the budgetary policies, we have a lot more financial policies, and that $5,000 threshold is in a different policy, these are These are just to try and draw out as we're creating the budget, what parameters to look at.
So just in the global sense, talking about the budget then, and I understand the audit and all that kind of stuff, and GAAP and GAFFER, whatever these acronyms that are used, but should there not be something in the overall budgeting process that the financial statement should be in accordance with GAAP, holding some level of standard to the, the budget? I understand it's a budget, but should there still be some guidance as to what the expectations are, so we don't get to year-end and all of a sudden the auditors come along and make a huge adjustment about something that was in accordance with, was not in accordance with GAAP?
The very last page of the policies is the accounting and audit policy, which does say that we have to be in accordance with GAAP and follow the standards of GASB.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's under the audit and accounting.
Well, the accounting piece is what we do, the audit piece is what the external company does.
Okay, so one doesn't stand in on that.
Yep, yep.
So, Al, if I could kind of go on to that, that fund balance piece for a minute. Would it be advantageous or would you be encouraging that we modify that policy to better state what happens with the excessive fund balance? Back, back to your original question, I guess.
Yes, it, it would. That was kind of the message I was trying to get across.
Yeah.
And, and, and the other underlying premise, which Renee talked to already, and that is the budget is prepared conservatively, and that's in here. And that means you tend to keep the revenue low and the expenses high.
Yep.
For obvious reasons. But that by the very nature means, well, I shouldn't say it's going to be, there's going to be some unintended surplus at that point in time. And so the question is, what's going to happen with that surplus?
Sure.
And some guidance on that surplus.
So to put that guidance into the policy would be the preferred direction?
Correct. That's right.
I would say the past, a number of years ago, maybe when you were on finance, the past practice, though it wasn't in a written policy, was to divert the excess, some of the excess at least, to future capital projects. Because again, those are more, considered more one-time costs. But, you know, that was never a written aspect to the policy, but that was, what was done many years, is some excess was pushed over to capital.
I, it, go ahead.
Just seems like, you know, it, it seems like we're meeting any auditing type of oversight with the, the way we handle things now. And I think it gives us some flexibility to address some needs we may have in a certain year. And I'm a little concerned if we make a policy that's so stringent, we may lose some of that flexibility, and somewhere down the road, it may, may affect the village. So if we meet the auditing standards, sometimes too many policies may be a bad thing.
I mean, for, for what it's worth, on that topic, when we do our bond rating calls with Moody's, and they list the, the points, points of note to the positive for the village, they, they jump all, all up and down about what we've been able to accomplish in terms of maintaining our fund balance and, in fact, in excess of the balance.
Moody's does really like that.
Right.
Al, is that something that you would like to see us have additional discussion on, at the finance committee level?
Yeah, I would, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that something we can put on a future agenda?
We certainly can.
I would appreciate that. Okay. Eric?
Anything else, right?
Okay, Sam?
No concerns.
Excellent. All right, I guess I don't have any additional comments, so I will look for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the village's budget financial policies.
All right, motion by Chris.
A second, just to get the finance committee involved.
And I think it's only finance committee voting on this, correct, Brian?
Correct.
I don't know who's voting on it, but we only have one body.
Finance committee.
Yeah, finance committee is voting on it. And this one is finance.
Okay, motion by Chris, second by Al. Any additional discussion? Seeing that, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. And then we're on to number three. I'll hand it back to Chris.
Okay, on to number three, it's discuss and take action to place on file proposed twenty-twenty-three operating and capital improvements budget. The village board will be voting on this. The finance committee is giving in discussion. Say that all right?
I'm sorry, I was just trying to get myself organized. Say it again.
No way.
I've got a lot of pieces of paper here.
I, I just said that the village board will be voting on this. The, the finance committee is giving input.
Correct.
As we go. With that, are you all ready to go?
Okay, yep.
All right.
Now I'm ready. Todd's going to run the slides for me. And we have lots of participation from our department heads and such. So obviously, y'all got the packet. You saw that it was nearly two hundred pages. So I'm not planning to go through every page or even close to that. I'm happy to answer questions on any page that was in the packet or beyond. We're going to focus on the slides and, you know, we can answer questions throughout or at the end. Like I said, the department heads are all here, and they'll be each doing their own little slides soon. But, you know, we're happy to, to take questions and take your input because again, this is the first, first presentation of the budget. We have a couple more as we'll see up here when we start to talk about the process. So the departmental process for the budget began back in June when I send out the information and the departments start to gather their data and their plans for the next year. They submit that information to me in July, and then I work through that. Todd and I work through that. We had a meeting with Chris. That all takes place, you know, during the July to October timeframe. And then we have these meetings. So finance, we just talked about the policies moments ago, and now we're on to the budget proposal presentation. Again, this is a good time to give us feedback, so we have time to investigate, look into things before we have a neck, the next presentation on November seventh. That's where we really encourage the public to come, and it's, it's a non-required public hearing, but we will let the public speak so that there's time for their input before we actually have the official statutory public hearing on November twenty-first. That is a very late meeting this year, so we would expect that the board to, expect the board to adopt the budget on that November twenty-first night. So some things that we don't know yet, we don't know our final assessed valuation. As in past years, the state assesses our manufacturing property, and we don't typically, typically get that until early November. We have not heard that anybody has challenged their manufacturing assessment. That was an issue we had last year, which really delayed us getting that information. So I'm hopeful that we will get it at the beginning of November and not, it was very late last year as somebody was challenging their assessment with the state. We also, it's too early for us to know the levies of all the other jurisdictions, so we won't know our final assessed tax rate for a while. Usually the ratio that I have here with the village at about twenty-eight percent, I would expect that to be pretty close again this year, once all the numbers come in. But those other entities typically will be working on their budgets now and into November, and they'll pass that along to us. So just to kind of get to the chase on what we're proposing for the tax rate, our assessed tax rate, which is what we actually, you know, calculate the bills on, is our assessed value. The village share only, we're proposing a two-point-two-seven percent increase to that tax rate. The equalized tax rate, which we look at just kind of for comparison, that's what the fair market value of the village, that, that tax rate would be, that is actually going down almost eight percent. Our, our ratio between our assessed value and our equalized value is down to eighty-two percent. So that's where you see on the, the chart on the far right, that gap is really large between our assessed rate and our equalized rate because the assessed value is not keeping up with the fair market value according to the state equalized numbers. So what does that equate to for, for tax bills? So any of you who maybe had looked in the packet, I did change the wording on this. It said home value, but I've heard in the community, people, you know, saying that there's no home here in Wannakee for a hundred thousand dollars. But there are properties that are worth that, and I also think it's a good sort of baseline to have in there so people can calculate their own potential property tax bills if it doesn't quite fit into this table. But for every hundred thousand dollars of assessed value, the tax bill would go up about fourteen dollars with this scenario.
Village portion.
The village portion. Again, that's about twenty-eight percent of the overall tax bill. So I have a couple other values there on the table, but at the very bottom, that's where you can, you can see the, the average home assessed value. So for twenty-twenty-two, it went up a little bit for the average, up to almost three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. So the estimated village tax would be two thousand three hundred and ninety-five dollars. So if somebody's home was valued at that, this year and last year, their tax bill would go up about fifty-three dollars. Yep. So the general fund expenditures, so the general fund is obviously the fund that houses most of our departments, most of the activities of the village, and so, and has most of the employees are within the general fund. So we're currently showing that the expenditures in the general fund would go up six point seven eight percent. And you can kind of see on the, the graph, that's a little bit higher of an increase than, than some of the past years. Some of the main contributors to that are the health insurance increases that we talked about back in September, the cost of living adjustments that we'll talk about when we get a few more slides down, the step increases. So our compensation plan has, you know, after so many years of being here, you kind of move along the steps. So there's increases for that. And we have fire and EMS increases, and then a, a couple of new positions are factoring in here. So Al kind of alluded to this previously about the projections for the year. So he had the numbers spot on. We had planned for a decrease in our fund balance in twenty-twenty-two of four hundred and ten thousand, again, using some fund balance to, to balance that out last year or I guess last budget for this current year. We actually are plan, predicting to end the, the year with a net income of about sixty-eight thousand. So I mentioned, we do budget our revenues very conservatively. So you'll see some of the bigger ticket items. Expenditure restraint is a revenue we didn't budget at all for in twenty-twenty-two, and we ended up getting about a hundred thousand for that. We get a credit card rebate, which we don't budget, which is twenty-six thousand. And then we had some state aids that either didn't have a budgeted figure or, you know, we, we budgeted very conservatively. That was about thirty-five thousand. Investment income, the rates had dipped down, but now they're going back up, so we, we still have a little bit of a, an overage there in, in investment income. Donations, we do not budget for donations, and we got about ninety thousand this year in the general fund. And then kind of all of our other revenues together ended up being over budget in all of our expenditures due to, you know, great spending of our departments. Those ended up being under budget by over a hundred thousand. So those are kind of all the things that factored into that positive outcome, I guess. So some other significant items to note for twenty-twenty-three, our equalized value grew at fourteen point three seven percent. So that is huge. Last year, we thought it was big at seven point three percent. This year, it was really large.
I, I took a peek at the Dane County communities. I, I think in Dane County, we're one of the three highest on EV increase for this past year.
And again, just as a reminder, that's supposed to simulate the market values and helps compare municipalities across the state who maybe aren't in the same cycle for their assessments, trying to compare those. So that, you can see our five-year equalized value growth has been right around nine percent. So again, very strong here. That directly helps our debt capacity. So the, the state requirement is five percent of your equalized value. So as your equalized value goes up, your debt capacity goes up right along with it. So that's something I know the board has, has looked at in the past. I, I threw in what our allowable levy increase was, is for twenty-twenty-three. So again, we talk a lot about the levy limits. So we have about four hundred and sixty-three thousand that we can increase our levy by. Most of that is made up from net new construction. So our net new construction, again, was very strong. I think the state average is around one percent. We're at almost three point eight percent for our net new construction. So that's four hundred and three thousand. And then we got a little bump of about sixty thousand in our levy because the closure of TID two. They let you take some of that as, as in addition to your levy, and some of it goes to property tax relief when that comes back online. So I talked a little bit about some of the increases in the general fund. So this is kind of three of the most significant pieces. The health insurance, again, we talked about that at the September nineteenth meeting. Those changes that we made equate to about eighty-five thousand increase. And that, right now, is assuming that everybody who currently takes health insurance will continue to take health insurance in the same family or single. But within the next week or so, open enrollment will be done, and so I will go back and revisit those in case anybody picked up insurance or dropped insurance through the open enrollment process. That hasn't historically been a lot of change in the past few years, but we'll see after open enrollment ends. EMS, we talked about this, I think it was back in August, on the increases for EMS. So the village's total twenty-twenty-three share is close to five hundred and eighteen thousand. We make up about sixty-six percent of that budget, and that is based on our population versus the population of all the other entities that are part of that district. Our increase was a hundred and fifty-one thousand in the twenty-twenty-three budget, which was a forty-one percent increase. Fire, we are about seventy-one and a half percent of the fire budget, so that our total share is seven hundred and forty-nine thousand. That for this year is about a hundred and four thousand dollars increase to our budget, or sixteen percent. In just a minute, the fire chief will, will talk a little bit about their budget. And so altogether, those things added a, a big chunk to the general fund of about three hundred and forty thousand. We are, as we'll see in a later slide, hoping to ease in some of those increases with some of our ARPA funds. of our ARPA funds over the next couple of years to, you know, make it not quite such a hit for the taxpayers in one year. And so now is...
Yeah, and we're, after a fire department, I think, do, do we continue through other departments?
Yep. No, we have, we'll go back to the, the, there's a little bit more on personnel, and then we'll start with the other departments.
Okay. But if okay with you, chief, would it be all right after your presentation if this, if, if the board could ask questions of you before we move on to the next slides? Okay.
And I got Brian Adler here with me as well, if there's something that between the two of us we can't answer, we just have to get back to everybody. Thanks for inviting us. Like, this is the first time that I've certainly done this on the fire end. But my name is Dave Kopp, and I am the fire chief of Wannakee. Our increase, there's basically three reasons for it. Number one is due to the dollar increase in the lead time of over three years to get replacement apparatus. The line item for truck replacement has been increased. Second one is due to the loss of the raffle income that we've done for the past, I don't know, Brian, many years. Because of state laws, we've had to increase incidentals that the raffle would have normally covered. And the third reason is basically price increases from vendor suppliers to come for all remaining budget adjustments. Yeah, the sixteen percents, I understand, is, is what it is. But it's boiled down to those three basic principles is all I have. Anybody got questions?
Gary? Did you put your hand up?
Nope, nope.
And I did have the whole fire budget in the packet if anybody had looked at that.
I'll do this. Jim? Any questions? Sam?
Nope.
I like to do it back and forth. Just so everyone knows. Paul?
No.
Al?
I'm not gonna argue. No.
Aaron?
No, thank you.
Nyla?
First of all, I'd like to say thank you for your services. It is vital and greatly appreciated. And I know that when the, because I'm on the fire commission, that when the motion was made to accept the budget, there was a little caveat with that, was that we wanted to come up with a plan for the fire department by the next budget. Do you have any suggestions what we should do between now and then to accomplish that goal?
That's going to be discussed. It's actually on the agenda for the end of the month for the fire district court. So that conversation will be had, and yes, there'll be much more information to follow on that.
Okay, so I, I have a, I don't know if this is the appropriate place to bring it up or not, but the village has some ARPA funding, and I'm wondering if there's any possibility we could be using some of that funding to get a consultant to move this process along?
That's, that's beyond...
Okay. I, I just wanted to bring up that suggestion because the, the funds are there, and from what I understand, ARPA funds can be used for that, and...
It would be an allowable.
And I do feel that we need to move along with this because right now, we're in so much limbo, and with, we can't accommodate this kind of budget increases for very long.
I understand that.
Okay.
I also understand the fact that apparatus, the cost of apparatus, and we've talked about this at the fire district level, has gone up dramatically. Our engine that we replaced a year and a half, two years ago, was, call it seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That same engine today, to replace it, is about nine fifty to nine sixty. Million-dollar engines, according to Pierce Manufacturing, are right around the corner. Our ladder that is going to be, needing to be replaced in the next ten years, so probably have to be ordered in the next five, just because of the lead time that's involved. Sock City just got a new ladder. McFarland just got a new ladder. We were estimating, probably five years ago, went out to Renee for large expenditures, we were estimating about one point three million dollars to replace that ladder. Sock Cities and McFarland's were basically one point four million apiece. We're ten years down the road. We're going to estimate that that engine, that ladder is going to be two to two and a half million dollars.
Renee, do you have this ARPA funding? Do we have a, can you give us a quick overview of what's available out there and what it could be used on?
Like, how much we have left?
Yes.
Because we have a couple years left to spend it. I think we have about, you know, we have a lot of things that are in the works that, or have been earmarked. I think we have probably about five hundred thousand. I should have looked at the spreadsheet, but probably at least five hundred thousand that's still kind of available, that hasn't been spoken for. And of course, there's some in this budget that would use some of that up, but, and we've got several hundred thousand that we haven't figured out how to spend yet.
And based on the amount we received and the type of community we are, there, there's, there is very little limitation on what we can and can't spend it on. Certainly, the board's been prudent to make decisions to try to allocate it responsibly. Nyla, can I, just for sake of clarification, mostly for people in the audience, because you, you referenced a study, and then Dave talked about equipment, but the study that you said there was a, an asterisk, or that, did that relate to a plan for staffing in the long term? Or was that related to more broader issues?
No, you made the motion.
Well, I, I think the ARPA funding and et cetera is a Band-Aid. I, and I also think that the proposed budget for fire is kind of skinny. I think that we better brace ourselves. We're not going to be able to, to increase our budgets by that little amount in the future. It's going to get a lot more expensive. We're going to have to address personnel as well as fire and et cetera. And then housing the personnel, things will be changing.
Our call volume for this year thus far, we're up between thirty and thirty-five That, that's pretty substantial. I mean, right now, we're at a number where we've exceeded, I believe, and Brian, correct me, we've exceeded the number for the most runs that we've ever had, probably within the last several days.
The most run of fire calls I've ever had in a single year was 2020 at three sixty-eight. We exceeded that number here in the past week. We're on pace for four hundred and fifty fire calls this year.
We'll be four fifty to four seventy-five. And if we get really busy, that five hundred number will be pushing, and we're volunteer
Where was I? Gary went out of order. I was doing so well, and all of a sudden, somebody...
Well, it's because I asked him the question. Sorry.
So first, thank you for being here tonight. I really appreciate you and Brian taking the time. And I don't think there's anybody in the community that is going to say, our firemen, who volunteer their time and go through all the training and all the work, and are there for every call, I don't think anybody's going to say, oh, we don't like those guys. They're, you're, you're the heroes of the community for doing that. I appreciate that. We had a discussion about our budget, Todd, Renee, as they mentioned earlier, and one of the things that just popped to me, and, and I said, oh, sixteen percent, you know, what's making up that sixteen percent? Dave's alluded to that tonight. And so I had some questions about it, and I asked for a meeting, which Dave, Brian and I, along with Todd and Renee met at. And where I was confused or concerned was in regards to the volunteers becoming paid at the fire chief level, at Dave's level. And we have been diverting funds there for four or five years?
About that, yeah.
Nineteen ninety-nine, to be exact. Half of it started in nineteen ninety-nine, and the next three years...
Twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
I'm sorry, twenty nineteen.
I was like, geez. We've been planning for a chief for a long time, man. This is great, you're still here.
No, in twenty nineteen, it was half. And you know the numbers, Renee knows the numbers, Todd knows the numbers, I mean, except for, and maybe some that you don't know the numbers.
Yeah, so my, my, my question was, I, I fully support, and we have always supported our fire department. The board has generally never really questioned. And this was one that I just said, I'm all for this truck. Maybe we need to give more to the truck. And I'm thinking, we're going to a personnel that we're putting money towards a, a fire chief that we've been doing for several years, that we have a hundred and fifty thousand?
Hundred and forty-seven thousand.
Hundred and forty-seven thousand?
Exactly.
That's...
I think that's right.
That's set aside for that, and it was just counterintuitive to what we do at the village in that we budget for the person for the next year. We don't save money for a potential hire up into the future. So that was just strange to me, and I thought, well, why don't we just put the money towards the truck as a capital expense versus employee? So that is what the question I had for them. And they've voted already at the district.
I was going to say, with the forty-two thousand dollars, we did entertain removing it. And it's, it's the same amount of dollars every year. We did entertain removing it from the budget, but two of the other districts wanted it left in for the imminent hire. They don't want to so-called kick the can down the road, and if we don't put that in, and next year, we got to come back, and we got to ask for a hundred thousand, well, that's sixteen point, whatever it was, percent of an increase, it's probably going to go up considerably from there.
Yeah, and we had a great discussion. I mean, we, we came up with different things that maybe, kind of like some of the other funds that we could put towards that fire chief for the first year or two, just, you know, if there's, we'll just hypothetically say there's two hundred thousand dollars in the account. Maybe they're putting fifty thousand a year towards it to keep the cost down for several years to wean us into it, so to speak, if that's the right word. But, you know, and, and as you mentioned, the other two didn't want to do it, and I just felt that I shouldn't just arbitrarily do it, that the board and finance committee should hear what it was. I, I hear the truck loud and clear, and, and the truck is going to run us over if we don't have preparation for it, which is what you're here tonight advocating for. I just, I was just struggling with as far as the hire goes, that we don't start saving for a hire at some point, because you're going to have to pay them regardless at that point when they come. So even if we were, you know, taking the forty thousand from that, I'd put the forty thousand dollars towards the truck and increase the budget for that or something else. But I guess it's a horse of peace, so...
And then the line item Phil had suggested at the last meeting, we had been putting monies, funds away per year for the truck, and there's a line item for a truck. And as we talked about the drastic increases that this apparatus is going to be, Phil recommended that we increase that dollar amount for a couple of years, increase it again for a couple of years, and I'm not sure, I don't have it written down, I don't have my notes, but Phil, we were putting two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year away for apparatus. That was increased to three hundred thousand for the next several years. Actually, I shouldn't say several, probably two, maybe three years. And then I think we were going to go to three fifty or four hundred thousand. We've got a squad truck that needs to be replaced. Squad truck, we're talking with Pierce Manufacturing, we're estimating at six hundred thousand, probably isn't going to cover, because that was several years ago. We're probably going to be someplace around seven hundred, if I had to guess, seven, seven fifty. But that truck is three years out to get it. So we, as the department, are looking to put that committee together next year, and order it next year. We're not going to see that truck for three years down the road. And this is coming from Pierce.
Chief, share with them, with everybody how old the truck is when we replace it?
Well, the engine was thirty years old. We, we called so-called fifteen years on the front line, fifteen years on the back, thirty years it goes down the road. The squad, which responds to, and Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, probably ninety to ninety-five percent of the calls, sees the most wear and tear. That squad isn't withstanding the type of punishment that fire trucks get. That truck will probably be, give or take, twenty years old when it gets replaced. Trucks take a beating, ladies and gentlemen.
The squad truck will be the first truck that we actually replace less than thirty years. All of our frontline engines and ladders and stuff like that, all those trucks go for thirty years. The squad will be twenty years old at that time. And that truck would actually respond to every call if we had staffing for it on every call.
And I believe NFPA, and Brian, again, correct me if I'm wrong, is apparatus is supposed to be replaced every ten years, every thirty.
All right, so it was really about me wanting to have you come, Dave, before your retirement, so you got this opportunity to come and speak in front of the community to get recognized. And I know that we have you, and we have Brian, and we have Bill, and there's no other firefighters in here.
And Dwayne's over there.
Oh, Dwayne is... Are you awake over in that corner? So I, I just want to say thank you to all of you for what you do. I'm, I'm in favor of what, what's been proposed, and thank you guys for what you do. And I would like everybody to give these guys a round of applause.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it.
Aaron has a question.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry. Is the, I might have forgotten this in the last minutes, but our percent of the fire budget is population-based, or is it the value of...
So the fire is based on equalized value.
Okay.
Because they're covering the area.
Okay.
The EMS is based on population because they're attending individual people.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, yep.
That's all. Thank you, guys.
And, and I think on behalf of Brian, and Dwayne, and the rest of the guys too, it's, we appreciate your support. Like you said, we, we've never really had any issues where anybody's come and said, well, you can't do that. You've always, always given us really strong support. We appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you again. Thanks. But you got to stay for the whole meeting. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay. So jumping back, so we had fire go in there because it seemed to fit with that, plus they had to get out of here. So the other department heads will speak in just a minute, and then you won't have to listen to me for a few minutes. But back to, back to our budget. So staffing accounts for the vast majority of, of our, specifically our general fund budget, again, most of our employees are in that budget. But even when you look at all of our funds together, staffing is about thirty-six percent of all of our funds. So the, the wages, I talked a little bit about the step adjustments per our compensation strategy. That adds about fifty thousand to the, to the budget. We are proposing a cost of living adjustment of three percent on January first and one percent on July second. That date is because that's the beginning of a pay period. And that is what we're proposing. So that would add fifty-eight thousand or so to the budget for the wages. We have a bullet there. So the police contract is already settled for, for next year, but they have a me-too clause in there. So if the non-representative, non-represented employees would get the three plus one percent raise, the union members would follow along with that.
The negotiated contract amount was two, one split.
Yes. And, and that fifty-eight thousand that I have on the third bullet, that includes the PD staff in there too, with getting that same raise. Just as a little side note, every half percent wage increase, plus or minus, affects the levy around twenty-five thousand or a point oh one two tax rate impact. That includes the benefits with it. And then we kind of have a little listing of the five-year history of our COLA. So a little, just a smidge higher this year, but again, we were trying to, first of all, keep pace with our peers and also recognize that the inflation has been very dramatic this year.
Little sidebar, we did do, did get some research from DCCVA yesterday or today, and communities in Dane County are ranging between two and five percent. So I think it's, we, we are in that ballpark, although I read County Executive Preasey's budget message today, and he's proposed a nine percent increase cost of living to all staff. I, I understand, Chief and I were talking about that already, that it appeared, it sounds as if that's been a negotiated wage increase that may be part of, we speculate maybe a TA that law enforcement has at the county level. Regardless, Executive Preasey is pursuing nine percent. I'll share that we are in a, and we'll be talking about this in a couple of weeks, we're in a really tricky environment because Dane County, in some offices, is also offering signing bonuses like we've never seen before, including sick leave bank matching. So we're in a really new environment for us as a municipal government. So we're in a really new environment for us as a municipal government in Dane County, so there's some challenges at hand immediately, and we'll be talking about some stopgap measures so we can retain and recruit well over the course of the next couple of board meetings, aside from our, our budget discussion, so I want to prep you for some of that. But we believe, at a staff level, administrative level, that, that what we're requesting here is in line with the majority of Dane County communities.
So to be helpful to the crowd, in case you don't know what DCCVA is, because you probably don't hear that too often, it's Dane County Cities and Villages Association.
They're a lobbying association that pursues policy in support of Dane County Cities and Villages.
Thanks for that, Todd. Then at the bottom, you've seen this number before, but the health insurance increases is the most significant benefit that, that the village pays for, that's about eighty-five thousand added on there. So as I mentioned, there are two staffing requests in this budget. So the first one is to add a patrol officer as of January first. There's some assumptions there on experience and level of education. The salary and benefit impact for that position would be about a hundred and ten thousand. And then we are proposing to add a deputy finance director slash deputy treasurer. This would be a second quarter hire, I guess, with some assumptions there. So the 2023 salary and benefit impact would be about eighty-six thousand. A full-year impact would be about a hundred and fourteen thousand for the following year.
And as you've come to expect, when you see new staffing addition requests, the department head making the request includes a justification memo, you saw that in your packet, I believe even the job description for the new position.
Right, because this would be an entirely newly created position.
I believe that was included in the packet as well, right? I think both Chief and Renee did a nice job clarifying for you the reasons that their department is facing the staffing challenges they are, and have justified their positions well. But certainly, they're, they're in a good position here to address questions of the new position, if you want to pause on that.
Any questions? Hearing none?
Okay, moving on. So now we get to hear from the departments on aspects of their 2023 budget.
I'll kick it off, and I'm gonna take team with Jared Hine, our deputy administrator and HR manager. And please, as department heads go through their, their presentations, we'll take a brief pause at each department, so you can ask questions of either the priorities we shared with you, or the deeper details relating to each budget that was in your packet. So for the administrator's budget, there's not, there's not a major increase of any sort, we actually had some decreases, and replaced the decreases with a couple new programmatic elements to help our service delivery. One of those is internal, and that's how we work with our employment practices to onboard new employees. It isn't a simple process, and while we only have about eighty-five, ninety regular full-time employees, we also have several hundred part-time, temporary, and seasonal employees in addition, and each of those employees is onboarded on an annual basis. So we are adding a module to our NeoGov system, or we're proposing to, that would essentially remove the, the manual paperwork process for employee onboarding, and utilizes a cloud-based system and streamlines that operation for both department head processing, and then on the HR side of things with Jared, which Jared manages, to finish that process and bring new employees onboard. Jared, do you want to add anything about that system?
No, I think, I think you did a great job, it just, it, it takes away, it takes out that, that human element, certainly, and just allows all four of us, because right now there are four of us that are involved with an onboarding process, there's the hiring manager, department head, myself, the clerk, and the finance director, this just allows all of us to always be on the same page, so it eliminates possibilities of things falling through and things like that.
We have researched the system with other communities, and have heard very positive things from various other departments on how it's helped. To note, that's a five-thousand-dollar cost in the admin budget, and that is an annual expense for that module addition. Another cloud-based system that we're looking to add is one that would be of support to our budgeting process, so it's very possible that this time next year, you'll see something different in how we share and display our budget information. What's gonna be most improved is the ability for you as a village board, for others as citizens, and our department heads to view an online budget book. If you recall, we don't do it anymore, but we used to publish this inch-and-a-half-thick-long thing of all the numbers. This replaces that, and actually lately, we've done a PDF on our website. This replaces that with an online searchable, organized, web-based budget book. So I think what we will get most out of that is a more transparent budget than we've ever seen before. Again, this has been, this is, this is becoming the norm in the municipal industry, and we believe that you'll find this very helpful as we make our way through the budget process. Did you want to add anything about that, Renee?
No, I think you did a good job on there, but I do think it will, can be evolved over time, we'll start with something, and then we can continue to add, you know, the, the demos that we've seen, and the, the people that have been using this for a while, I mean, we've been talking about this for a number of years, that, right, they, the departments can really put a lot of information beyond what was even in the old budget book, to just be helpful to the public, and so that they can learn more about the departments themselves beyond just the numbers.
As we proceed with this system, we believe, we believe, we will be able to use it as a trending document as well. So with an easy couple of clicks, you'll be able to see progress from multiple budgets on a single budget line to track those changes over time. Finally, Jared, why don't you, in addition to the hats that I've already indicated, Jared is also our IT manager for the organization, and we have some updates to our IT services, if you'd like to touch on those.
Yep, so, working with our IT service provider, we've identified a pretty extensive list of improvements that we feel we need to be making over time, but what we've identified for the upcoming year are the two most important. One of these we actually tackled earlier this year with a new backup system that went in very well, we were able to save a lot of money by purchasing it when we did. But the other big factor would be the multi-factor authentication, so this is kind of your gold standard for security for your network. So it would allow, it would provide that extra layer where employees would have to sign in or confirm that they're attempting to sign in through another device, so you're probably familiar with it, like with your cell phone, like if you have like an email or Gmail account, for example, and you're sending it to a new device, it'll get pinged on your phone, and you need to confirm that it's you, that's what we'll be setting up. So we're, we're really gonna be taking our, proposing, obviously, to really take our security from a pretty modest level to a much more robust level of security here.
And I'd admit that, we've, we've come a long way in the past twelve months or so when we changed our IT managed services, an organization who specializes in security. So we, we've really, we've really come a long way, and these will be the, a couple of the key final pieces, but not the cheapest of pieces for us to tackle. So that makes up the gist of the main policy issues within the admin budget. And Jared, I would be happy to take any questions you have on ours.
Questions? All right, everybody's easy tonight, Todd, that's two in a row.
Well, I'll tackle this, these two as well. The, the village board's budget isn't remarkably different either, but what I want to remind the board of is the opportunity we always budget for, to afford you the ability to attend sessions likely by the league of municipalities that are put on on an annual basis. So if any of you do care to, and I, as you know, I send you the notices, you know when those conferences come up, let me know, and staff will be happy to arrange your attendance at those sessions. The municipal court, one thing to note, and you may have seen or heard that our current municipal court clerk, Jody, is, is going to be leaving the organization, she's moving to, gonna be moving to a different community, and we have posted the position of court clerk. In that process, we have reviewed the job description, in fact, you approved a modified job description, and in that description, we have added, depending on the time of year, twenty, twenty-five to fifty percent of that position's time being dedicated to front of house at Village Hall, tax collections, election work, and it will also be teaming with our front desk, citizen service representative, to cover times when that position is absent. So we've built in that element, we think that will be a good modification for the staffing at the front, and will work out well. We've had a close discussion with the municipal court judge on this process, and we're working together on the recruitment. So other than that, nothing specific, nothing specific to change within that department.
Questions? Moving on.
Okay.
So, next is me, and like Todd just mentioned, part of the additional point-two-five FTE position is to help with election time and licensing, so that will be a nice benefit. And then elections, we're gonna have two less elections next year, we'll have two elections exactly, in February and April, so that should cut back on some of our costs. And then, like was mentioned earlier, our assessment ratio, and trying to bring that up into compliance closer to, instead of eighty-two percent, being more towards the hundred percent assessed value, so that's all I have.
I can add another primer, certainly, I would assume you took note when you heard about the eighty-two percent for our assessment ratio right now. It certainly isn't ideal, in fact, the state, what's the state requirement for, for updating the assessment ratio if it falls too low?
So if it drops below ninety percent, you have, I believe it's up to four years to do a revaluation. We dropped below that already two years ago, so we, you know, within the next couple of years, we would have to do this anyway, in accordance with the, the state, but being as our ratio is all the way down to eighty-two percent, we thought that 2023 would be a good time to look at that.
The assessing industry really has gone through some changes in process, partly due to COVID, and some technology advances that allow them to be incredibly effective and accurate without always the need to perform interior inspections. It's changing the game a bit in the assessment industry. So we have proposals from our current assessor on how to approach, one, the intra-market update, which should bring us up closer to a hundred percent next year, but then we'll be considering with you a modified approach to how we look to continue with our assessment practice. There's a process called full, full market assessment, which essentially works to preserve an assessment ratio very close to a hundred percent on an ongoing annual basis. They would involve partial revaluations of portions of the village on a timed schedule, but then with data, apply that new information to revalue the entire village, so we don't have the large gap that we're, we're hit in a revale. We'll have our, I know, I'm not the expert on it, I, I know enough to be dangerous, but we'll have our assessment specialists here to describe that process, and I, I think we'll be tackling that early part of, early part of next year to look at a new process.
Yeah, our, our current contract with the way we've been doing it, it goes through the end of 2023, so in 2024 would be when we would maybe pursue a different way of doing the assessments with, with, when the new contract would come into play.
Questions? Let's hear about community services.
So, three items from our department. The first one is continued growth in the village results in continued demand, increased demand for the services that we provide, and what we're finding is that our, our best way to address that demand is to find community partners, and to really reach out to, with partners for who we're serving. That could be the public library, the ice pond, the police department, who can cook with the chief these days, I understand. We're finding that those kind of partnerships are really doing good things in our department for our community, so that's gonna be a focus for next year. We also need to spend some time looking at pay plans for part-time, seasonal, and part-time permanent staff, as with all employers. In our area, we're all struggling to find people to come and work for us, and to make sure that they continue to return year after year, so we're gonna spend some energy making sure that we are competitive and treating our employees right. And Todd talks about two thousand part-time, two hundred part-time employees, I think they're all mine. So less paperwork, thank you. And then finally, we are going to be evaluating our fee structure at the Village Center for our fitness passes and room rentals, it's been a while since we've had some increases there, and so we're gonna be taking a very close look at both of those fee structures in our department.
Thank you. Any questions? Moving on? Community development.
Tim?
Good evening. A few things to note from our department budget for next year. One of them is the create-wanna-key line item has moved out of community development and into sort of its own department under culture, recreation, and education. The details of those can be seen on pages twenty-five, twenty-six in your packet. Similar to some other departments you've heard, we're seeking approval of cloud-based online software related to business recruitment retention and development review process. The development review process software specifically would allow for streamlining of internal processes, as well as allow applicants the ability to track their own project as it works through the development process. So we see that as a, as a big benefit for increasing transparency as well. In terms of projecting revenue, revenue, we imagine is going to be perhaps not as robust as it was last year, so we're, our permit, our revenue, we're projecting to be similar to a few years ago.
Questions for Tim? What do you have for lunch today? Gotta break that up.
No, I'm kidding.
Library.
All right, good evening, everyone. We have a very nicely status quo budget this year, nothing that we're asking you for that's out of the ordinary. We are kind of building on the last few years of your generous support in growing our services in our new building. This year, we've seen just a, I wanna say post-pandemic, although there's no post yet, surge of activity. Our visits are up sixty-two percent in 2022, our program attendance is up forty-five percent, our circulation is up fifteen percent, so we're really seeing that kind of post, kind of, we're out of, into this new phase of usage, and it's really wonderful to see. We're still doing seven days a week service, and again, I thank you for the last two years for supporting Sunday services. Our first year that we were open on Sundays, we had over six thousand visitors on Sundays last school year, and it's, may have been right back up this year. No new staffing requests. We did, in 2021, the library board implemented a staffing plan. This year, one of our full-time adult services librarians left, and we've decided to convert that position into a youth services librarian, so we're currently hiring for that. That'll be our second full-time youth services librarian to work along with Brittany Ginsbach, our fabulous youth services manager, to double basically what we can offer youth in this community, it's really, really growing. So this is an opportunity, we never like to lose somebody, but it's always an opportunity to move the organization forward. And then, small increases in our print and digital services, we are going to be hopping on the digital streaming bandwagon, we're looking at a product called Canopy, the K, that we would start in January, that would offer streaming video and movies for our patrons. that would offer streaming video and movies for our patrons.
Questions for Eric? Thank you. And next we have, uh, police chief.
In addition to the proposed patrol officer position, we're looking to add a thousand dollars to the line item for our uniforms. Uh, every time we hire a new officer, it's between two and three thousand dollars to outfit them with all the equipment that they need. And then in addition, an ongoing uniform allowance to repair that equipment. So, looking to just keep up with the growth in that area. Uh, over the last three years, we've seen our, uh, maintenance prices or, or cost increase on our building. Uh, it was very, it was low, it was in the seventeen hundreds a year, proposing a two-thousand-dollar increase there to bring that up to thirty-seven-hundred, just to try to be a little bit more in line with what we've seen in the last few years as far as building repairs. And then the final one would be, uh, increase in our gas, uh, the cost of gas. We were at two dollars and eighty cents a gallon before, so estimating somewhere around three-fifty. I hope that's close, um, for the next year. So, that's really the biggest increase. The gas one is, uh, I think around ten-thousand-dollar increase from where we were the year before.
Okay. Questions?
Without digging too far in, is there any feasibility for alternative fuels?
I was waiting for this question. So, I literally just sat, uh, just had a meeting with the Dane County Chiefs Association this week, and that was a topic of discussion, uh, regarding like electric vehicles and things like that. Uh, the general consensus from the couple of agencies that are using them in a non-control fashion, so think, um, like your detectives who aren't out, um, going call-to-call, is that, that, uh, technology may not quite be there yet. Uh, the Chiefs Association, though, did put a committee together to study that, something that they can share out with all agencies as we're all getting these types of questions. So, uh, certainly something to look at when, once it's there, but there's a lot that goes on in the cars from an electrical standpoint. And I think that's where some of the concern is right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Public Works.
That'd be, uh, me.
That'd be me.
That's gonna be Bill.
Anyhow. Let it go. Not a whole lot, I mean, we're not adding a whole lot. We're just kind of, uh, trying to use, I guess, our savings that we had from this mild winter last year to help cover some of the costs of the increases as everybody's experiencing with equipment and supplies. The other thing we're looking to do is with our village engineer that we've got, is to provide him some, uh, software equipment to help him do a better job in some things he's doing, in such things as, uh, he's doing, uh, safety, sidewalk safety program, some ADA stuff on handicap ramps, uh, in the sidewalks, and, uh, and some of our retention ponds, too. He's looking to put a program together to, uh, start the, uh, maintenance programs for all of our retention ponds. So, that.
Questions?
Water.
Hey, I think, you have a question?
Yes.
Your hands up.
Yes, I'm probably, uh, I beat this drum every year. And Bill and I have discussions, uh, you know, our public works guys, 'cause I spend a lot of time with them. Great, great folks, hardworking, dedicated, you know. Bill's done a tremendous job with technology. You know, instead of adding people, we've updated, gosh, across the board, from our trucks to end loaders to, you know, getting better equipment to make, make everyone more efficient. But we've reached that point, and, you know, we need to think about adding some people. Um, we're, we're used to really high levels of service in this community, and people don't realize that other communities don't have those levels of service. I mean, from the, from the beautiful flowers on Main Street, to getting your brush picked up every week, your leaves picked up every week, that doesn't happen in other communities. People don't realize that. Our guys, you know, work really hard, they're dedicated, but people expect the snow be plowed and the grass to be mowed and the brush to be picked up. And when Bill has, and his guys, Ryan, when they have a glitch, there was someone who had a family emergency this year, and he was out for a week. That throws off, I mean, they can't catch up. They don't have enough bodies to do when, when someone gets COVID and they have to be out for a week. It puts these guys in a terrible position. I've been harping on this for a number of years now. We, we love to be, you know, proud that we're Tree City, USA. Those guys, as hard as they try to trim trees, they've got too many other responsibilities that they never can get that breakaway time to really concentrate. Uh, we have trees all over this community that, you know, need to be trimmed. And when you don't trim them in two or three years, you're just wrecking the trees when you have to trim them. So, I'm concerned that we're not putting another body into our public works and parks department to, to maintain our level of service. I'd really like us to look at at least, you know, looking at a July hire to get a, you know, a fifty percent funded position for next year. That would allow, I mean, one of the bigger issues that they face today is, you know, if we get a snowstorm and if, if any of you really wanna have a good day, jump in the snowplow at like five-thirty in the morning or five o'clock in the morning and see what these guys have to do when there's a snowstorm, driving those trucks with these big wing plows. These guys, I mean, are really, really good operators. But when one guy is sick and he can't show up, it, I mean, they don't have another body to catch up. So, I, I just think we need to fund at least a half position. So, that gives them time to get some training. So, next winter, at least they have a staff that's trained, ready to go, and help them with those kind of levels of services, because that's what we expect to have. So. If I could, we're, we'd be happy to look at that. And again, fortunately, timing-wise, we have a couple more budget meetings to discuss it. And I think for, for clarity, uh, Bill, your, your last, what was the last year when you added a position? Was it twenty-one's budget?
Yeah.
Twenty-one's budget, and I believe we have scheduled in our staffing management plan a new position for the twenty-twenty-four budget. Is that correct?
Correct.
So, a year from now, we would have been talking about that position. So, we can, uh, definitely do, uh, some research on that, on that impact and, um, bring it, bring it forward for, for further discussion. Renee can also, she'll be giving you a rule of thumb at the end of the budget presentation that will show you what every, what is it, every ten-thousand-dollar of addition will do to, um, in change, in change to the bottom line as a result of spending change. Um, this is the first I heard that you wanted to pursue this this year, so Renee and I can do some work along with Bill, uh, to prep the board for that conversation at your next meeting. And as I talked about earlier, you know, other communities out there, uh, we just had a number of people in that department get contacted directly by a neighboring community. I mean, there aren't that many qualified people that are CDL drivers and can do all these jobs, and every community's struggling with this, and now they're coming here trying to hire our people away. And if that happens, it really puts us in a bind. So, um, I just think it's something we need to focus on a little bit. I will, I will share, as you look across the, the back row, and then, and then Adam. You have, you, this environment right now, and you, you have every department face, with their employees facing those mobile opportunities. It's a new game, um, and, and I agree with you, and I agree with you for every department, um, with that challenge.
Okay, any others?
One correction, uh, to Gary's comments, uh, it's not all guys that he hires over there. There's all sexes that are there driving those trucks.
Yes, we do have a team.
I don't know what to say now. I was gonna make a comment, but I'm not gonna make a comment now. No. I would just echo Gary's comments that we do have a lot of services in Wana Key that you don't have in other communities. And snow plowing is one of the biggest ones that our guys just are awesome. If you go into Madison, you may get your plow, your rose plowed several days later, um, after the snow. We're out there right away and getting it done for people, so my hat's off to, to you guys on that. And we can look at that as a potential.
Okay? All right. Thanks, Bill. Let's see how you do, senior services.
All right.
It's me, gotta go, it's me. It's a trend now.
Once again, in, um, next year's budget, we will receive an increase in our funding from Dane County. And the money comes for case management services and the nutrition program. And they base the amount that we receive on services provided. So, we do a lot of meals, we provide a lot of, uh, case management hours. And that was a preliminary number, and with the nine percent, if it does go through, um, with the county, that will increase by nine percent, because in the paperwork that I submit, it follows that those, um, that money comes for personnel. So, that should be getting increased. Um, we're keeping our revenues for next year at the same level, but I'm foreseeing, because, um, we're seeing growth. Um, you know, we, we had a couple of years where we were very little programming and trips and everything because of the pandemic. We're, um, getting back into doing all those things again, and, um, I can see us surpassing that amount next year if everything stays the same. People are, they wanna go travel on our trips and do our programs, and, um, so we're gonna do good there. Also, um, our donations and fundraising amounts, um, there was a time when that was kind of dry there. Again, I hate to say it because of the pandemic, but it was, people weren't coming into the center. But all of those amounts are increasing, um, again. The revenues are getting better.
Questions? Meals on Wheels driver?
We have, we have tons of volunteers that drive the meals, and, uh, right now, we're, we're looking for someone to, uh, pay for an emergency meal, and I think we'll probably find that by tomorrow. Maybe Juana Hopps will wanna do that. We supply, we, we supply a lot of meals and we don't charge people for them. We supply a lot of rides and we don't charge people for them, and it's a great service.
And, um, because, um, we're been losing a few drivers, if you know of anyone, we are seeking, um, drivers for Meals on Wheels program and for our Driver Escort program. So, if anyone's interested or knows someone, um, please contact the Senior Center.
Thank you. You get to speak again.
Okay, back to me. So, um, uh, for the finance department, um, so back at the August fifteenth meeting, um, the board approved, um, our audit, um, contract for twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, um, which we did through an RFP process. So, that's, um, a slight increase to the finance budget. And then, um, as we already talked about, adding that position. Otherwise, finance is pretty much status quo. There's not a lot happening in that budget.
Questions?
If I could, before we leave, though, there's a slide at the end where I do this, but I'm actually gonna do it now. As I look at the department head team, I just realized that there are two department heads here who were department heads when I started twelve years ago for you. Others are in new positions or have come since then. We've had good teams for many years, but I wanna tell you, uh, I'm really proud of the group that, that we and you have helped assemble in the department head ranks. We're very well-served, and, um, I'm, I'm proud of the work that they've done. So, thank you, team.
Thanks, Todd. Okay, so, um, we've talked a little bit about our unassigned fund balance policy. So, that is to maintain our unassigned fund balance between twenty and twenty-five percent of the next year's operating expenditure budget. You can see the recent history, as I mentioned, uh, in the last, um, agenda item. Um, we have been, uh, over that, um, for a number of years. And, um, but as we also said, Moody's, uh, when they're doing our ratings, they really like to see this. But, uh, we're, we're trying to figure out ways to strike a balance, and, um, you know, we will, um, talk about it at a future finance committee meeting, um, you know, if we wanna put more parameters around, um, how that gets spent. But I guess, okay, it's, um, I guess a good problem to have, if you'd call it a problem. So, um, but we are planning to use some of that fund balance in the twenty-twenty-three budget. So, if we didn't do, um, any of the fund balance usage that I have on this slide or the ARPA usage that I have on the next slide, um, RSS tax rate would be significantly higher. It'd be about a, uh, three times as much, um, of an impact to the taxpayers. So, we've done this for many years. We strategically use fund balance, um, and now, in this case, we have the ARPA available to help, um, bring that tax rate down, um, and help our citizens. So, the first bullet there, um, we call that the pay-go enhancements. So, we had a multi-year plan, I think this is about the fourth year, where we were kinda easing in, um, some of our pay-go dollar amounts. Uh, we're now finally in the final year of that, um, so we'll be, um, using seventy-five thousand of fund balance to help, um, fund all those pay-gos.
Could, could we just take a quick pause for people in the audience who might not know what we're talking about when we say pay-go? There's a couple elements to that. Could you just quickly explain what that's for?
So, um, we call that our pay-as-you-go, um, funding, and we have various accounts. We have streets, street maintenance, trails, capital, or, I'm sorry, park maintenance, parks, capital.
Equipment.
Equipment. And so, those are things that, um, we've worked over many years, uh, well before I got here, to, um, try and fund a lot of those projects with, um, money that we have on hand rather than borrowing for everything. So, our streets, we, um, we up that, we try and spend around two million dollars, uh, a year on our street work. So, half of that is, um, funded with, uh, money on hand in these pay-go accounts, and then half of it we borrow. So, um, those are, have been a concerted effort to get those to levels where we can accomplish projects without always having to borrow for them.
And I think that it also has ramped up based on board-based, um, policy to be, try to get further ahead on our road maintenance, um, efforts. But, uh, what portion of the pay-go is parks-related? Parks, trails, et cetera, is it around AB? Sue, do you know off the top of your head what's?
So.
Hundred-and-forty thousand dollars is, um, for care and maintenance, and seventy thousand dollars a year is capital, and trails is eighty-five thousand for trails.
So, I thought it was good to do a quick pause there, so, so everyone watching or here knows what we're talking about with that.
Good, thanks for that. Another usage of fund balance, um, that we plan to do, so you may remember, a few years ago, we set aside a very large chunk of fund balance, over a million dollars, um, to fully fund our sick leave conversions as people retire. And so, um, just sort of tallying up the retirees', um, contributions that we need to make into their HRA accounts for twenty-twenty-three, that's about a hundred-and-forty-three thousand, um, that we will use of fund balance, um, to make those payments, 'cause it's already been set aside for that purpose. Um, the intra-market update, um, for the, um, assessment, um, issues that we were talking about earlier, we have been budgeting, um, steadily for, um, a number of years. We've essentially been setting money aside for when we needed to do that. So, now we will tap into that fund balance that we have, uh, set aside for that purpose. And then, um, we're looking to use, um, some fund balance to fund a portion of Juana Boom, primarily around thirty thousand, which is about what the fireworks cost. And then, just an additional application of fund balance of about two-hundred-and-forty-six thousand. Again, that's mostly just ta, straight tax relief, um, to bring that, uh, rate down for our citizens. So, with all that, um, that's about four-hundred-and-sixty-one, or five-hundred-and-sixty-one thousand, uh, usage of fund balance. But even with that, when I look out the next five years at what our, um, projected, um, fund balance ratio would be, you know, we're anywhere from thirty thousand, in the later years, we get down closer to the policy of twenty-five thousand. Again, those are projected, and, and mainly if everything kinda stays the same, we do start to whittle down closer to our policy. Questions on the fund balance?
Questions?
Just 'cause that's a bigger area, I just thought I'd take an extra pause there, but otherwise, moving on. So, I mentioned, uh, we were also gonna try and use some of our American Rescue Plan, uh, ARPA dollars, um, in the current budget to, to tackle a few things. The first three listed on there are the one, some one-time costs. Again, Todd talked to- Again, Todd talked about the onboarding module, the digital budget book. And these IT needs are a little bit different than what they talked about earlier. These are just one-time costs. We thought this would be a good usage of some of our ARPA dollars. The leafback, I was allocating to the ARPA. So one of our policies for equipment replacement, we're supposed to maintain a level of five hundred thousand per year in spending and, and having that money available. And with the inflation and the surcharges that we've been seeing with some of the larger pieces of equipment, we were not going to be meeting that policy. So I pulled one large piece of equipment over into the ARPA budget. Hopefully, things will start to stabilize and then we can, you know, we won't have to rely on ARPA indefinitely for things like that. The chamber payment, so we had some discussion at some meetings. So we decided for 2023 to leave that as ARPA-funded. Hopefully, we still have two years left of the ARPA money. Hopefully, by the end of that time, maybe we will actually start to get some room tax again. You know, from, I know there's been different discussions about hotels in the area. So we're hoping just to keep this until we can fund it again with the room tax. And then I mentioned a little bit earlier about easing in some of those EMS and fire increases, using ARPA funds, about two-thirds of the increase in 2023, and then whittling that down to a third in 2024 to help relieve the tax impact for those increases. So debt service, we do have a number of policies in, in the debt area. So the first one there is the one that we've probably talked the most about in my six years here or so. And that is the policy to stay below fifty percent of the state-imposed debt limit. And at the end of 2022, we're going to be down below twenty-five percent. So again, with our equalized value increasing the way it is and our debt kind of staying level, that percentage is actually going down. So we're in really good shape there. The other two are some lesser discussed policies, but keeping our, the debt service part of the budget below thirty percent of the total village expenditures. We're well below that in this proposed budget. And then keeping the equalized tax rate for debt below two dollars and twenty-five cents per thousand. We're well below that as well.
I think one note, as you look at this chart, this makes a number of assumptions about our borrowing going forward, but this does not include the potential borrowing for an aquatics facility. So that would be, that would certainly, at some point in this process here, if that's a decision the board makes, would make a change in the, the lower maroon would, would bump up.
Right, this is without that. But yet, it is using our financial management plan that Ellers has projected out for ten years on what we think we would borrow for other needs such as streets, parks, et cetera. So that's in there, just not if we were to borrow for aquatic facility.
So our lower level of our debt policy, or, or top level of it, is roughly sixty million, is that right? Am I reading that right?
For our internal policy, it's that, yeah, that kind of lightish, bluish, greenish.
So assuming that the voters choose to put a pool aquatic center in next, would that be twenty-three or twenty-four that that would really impact?
It would depend on how quickly the process moved.
And with that, we would still be significantly below.
Correct.
And that, that's, that's not by accident of the village board's effort. I remember back when I started, we were, I think we even, did we just notch above the twenty-five percent? That was about twelve years ago, wasn't it? And the board was really careful at that time to make sure we established policies and took steps to provide capacity when you felt it was appropriate for some major funding needs. So this is certainly not an accident.
Did you mean fifty percent or twenty-five?
It, it was the twenty-five that we just notched above, I think, eleven years ago.
Percent or millions?
The percent.
Fifty percent. Our, our, we were over our internal policy.
Our internal policy.
But not the state.
Correct, I just want to make sure we're on.
The blue, the blue one.
The blue. We nudged into the purple a little bit.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that was only for one year and it was pretty small, I think.
Thank you.
So this, this is the capital improvement plan for 2023. We've discussed parts of this already with, the, the vast majority is funded by the pay-as-you-go funds. And then some, the village center has a reserve that they use for their own capital needs. So that left debt financing required for 2023 of one point six million. On the next slide, that kind of shows what that's to be spent on. So you may recall, we have started borrowing every other year for our capital needs. So the borrowing for 2023 has already taken place in early 2022. So we carry those for, those monies into 2023 for the spending. So the dollar amounts are set, you know, we won't borrow anymore for this. There could be some minor tweaks in terms of what, say, park improvement is done. But these are the broad categories. You know, more than half of it for street improvements. I'll come back to the police department thing in a minute. Library, they propose to enclose their technology hub into a room, I believe. And then park improvements and parking lot replacement. So that's the Meadowbrook parking lot that's slated for 2023. Back to the police department improvements. So this, again, this borrowing took place already. Police department is in the process of doing some facility planning. It's going to be talked at, about at a future, maybe even the next meeting, perhaps. So these improvements will be potentially on hold pending that study because this was for carpet and some things like that. So this line item may need to be reallocated or saved until.
That equalized or to a hundred percent of value approach to identifying their tax rate. We remain in, as I can see, in the bottom third. And this would, this takes into account 2021, is the last year where we have known information. Now granted, all communities like ours are right now in the process of modifying our, our tax rates. It'll be interesting to see what happens with the seven percent decrease that's proposed this year to what this will look like for our 2022 confirmed rates. But we, we still stay in that lower third quite squarely.
So Todd started this before, but you know, just thanks from my perspective too, for all the department heads' help, Todd's help, the whole management team, Chris and many others who ask questions along the way. It's very much appreciated as we try and pull this whole thing together. So, you know, we'll be able to entertain more questions. And, you know, again, we have some notes on some things that have been suggested that we'll look into for the next time. Here's that rule of thumb that Todd was mentioning. So every ten thousand dollar change in the levy impacts the tax rate by a small fraction and even a small fraction of the percent. But it's about a four dollar change up or down for that average home value. So. But, and just a reminder that until we know the manufacturing assessment, we don't know what that final assessed tax rate is. But I'm hopeful it will be near my projections. So I guess if there's more questions that people have thought of at the end, otherwise we can talk about the action.
Comments, questions, finance or board?
Just one question. The inflation is such a big factor right now. And does these budgets really reflect like the seven, eight percent inflation that we're experiencing?
I would say not in all areas. Certainly, we tried to address it in some of the gas, in some of the bigger ticket items. You know, we didn't factor in inflation for every single line item. But again, that's, when we're budgeting conservatively and higher on the expense side, hopefully, we'll be able to absorb some of that if, if things come in higher just simply due to inflation. But we didn't put a factor in or anything like that.
Gary?
I just, you know, as Todd mentioned earlier, the department heads, Renee, Todd, Chris, you know, people put a lot of work and effort into this and, you know, you do a great job. It makes it a lot easier for everybody else in the committee to, you know, understand this. So thanks for your time and effort.
Okay?
I have a question, just a comment.
Go ahead, Al.
I know the budget predominantly in the general fund is based. Personnel costs are a huge component of that. As I sit back and think about, and it was talked about a couple of times today, the fact that employees are more transient and moving based on what they can get paid elsewhere. Is three percent enough? And I'm not here to negotiate for anybody. I'm just a little surprised at three percent. On the other hand, being a taxpayer, you know, I feel the pain like everybody else. But we also want to keep our good people too.
The proposal is three on one-one and then one on seven, seven-two. So the net is a four percent base move. But point well taken. And we've certainly, we certainly had some internal discussion about, about what, what we're facing in the marketplace. The board's going to hear some discussion about retention and recruitment stopgap measures that might account very directly for today's inflationary, inflationary circumstances. But we do, and Jared, in, in working on the HR and the things, do pay attention to our wage scales and what we're facing. We're, in fact, there's two or three positions right now in a couple of departments. One in police, one in, uh, library? Is that the two that we're doing? We're rechecking some of the external comps to consider whether interim market updates are needed for us to remain competitive and retain the employees in those positions. Public works as well.
Yeah.
We're talking, yeah, we're talking about one in public works. So we're out there in the marketplace, talking to our peers and getting those updates to see if we need to make interim adjustments.
And I can appreciate that. And I can tell you from being in private enterprise for so long that, and not retired. However, to replace a person, that is expensive to find, to replace, get them on board. There is a cost to that process. So retaining is usually the cheapest way to go. Three percent to me might be a little on the light side, in my humble opinion.
Yeah, we could get a little.
We had an early budget proposal that put it four at one-one. That does sort of ease, there's some accounting and payroll and HR stuff that, that appreciates the easier process of a one-year adjustment.
Four percent at one-one is simpler, obviously, from, from the payroll perspective. But that, obviously, that's not the only factor.
But I don't think your staff would complain. With that said, I would also note that what, what Renee started with in the very initial raw budget proposals, that when we inputted all the figures, we were at a six-point, what was it, six-point?
About six point seven percent, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Before we started applying some of the tax relief.
So that, that's, that's where we started in, in raw budget form. And what Renee went through and the hoops we worked through. And then input from Chris on where he offered advice for us to really target. That, that's where we came down to the two, two-point.
Two point two-seven.
But this is also a good time from a policy perspective. If the board felt there was a policy directive to achieve and a why, a why change in the tax rate. If you want to be able to say, we are going to zero-flatline the tax impact change, that's really important for Renee and I to know now if that's a policy priority of yours. Because then we can work on other, other budget modification proposals free to consider in a couple of weeks.
So with every decision we make, there ripple effects. And what, what Al's getting at, it's just one component. Because we, if we put it in simple terms, if employees cost more, goods cost more. We're seeing that with inflation right now with a shortage of employees and so on and so forth. Just like if we increase our wages up for our employees, our taxes go up as a result of that because we've got to pay for that too. So it's, there's different things that can happen. I'm not saying that's the only reason we have inflation, but that's one of the reasons we have inflation is people are making higher wages at this point, so.
So as, as exciting as this is, I make a motion, redirect staff to publish the notice as required by state statutes that indicates that the proposed budget is available for public review and schedule a public hearing for November twenty-first.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe?
Yep.
Any other comments?
My only comment is this one is just the board voting, not the finance committee.
Right.
Just to make that clear.
So I'm going to make one more comment. Do you have one?
I also have.
Go ahead.
I was just going to point to the November seventh date as the additional public hearing. If there's public input, that's a great day to get it because it's before we actually take action.
Okay, and, and my comment was going to be, for all those who are new to the meetings that haven't been here in other meetings and you still are going to see your, put some other stuff, this is how generally meetings go. But you have been given the pleasure by coming here for a different topic to hear about the village budget and learn a lot more. So I'm, I'm glad you're here this evening to hear that in itself. And then I also, just like we did for fire, our village staff deserves credit for a lot of things and this is one of them, so I'd like to give them a round of applause. All right. So, Joe?
Oh, wait, no, you didn't vote.
No, we haven't.
You didn't vote on Phil's motion.
That's right, I made my comment. So, call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I just have it. Thank you, Renee. Okay. Now, now, Joe.
We had to redo the whole presentation.
No, you gotta start over, yeah. No, now for the finance committee, just looking for one final motion.
I hope we close the finance committee meeting for the night.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Al. I'll second it. And a second by Jim. I assume no additional discussion, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, finance committee stands adjourned.
Finance committee adjourned. Thank you, we'll give it a second for you guys to clear. Unless you're all staying for the rest of the meeting.
I gotta eat.
Could you do me a favor? Could you give me a glass of water? Right there, once you're right there. Thanks, Brian. We'll get these guys out of here during that time. He's grabbing a water.
Appreciate it, appreciate it.
I mean, we're paying him a fraternity to be here, so I figure he should do something.
This is services for something.
I took a little dig at you. So it's on camera, so I apologize.
We gotta use you for something while you're here.
That's that, so. All right. Thank you, Brian. Okay, so let's get moving on our consent agenda. First item, would anybody like anything pulled or I look for a motion?
I will move approval of the consent agenda.
I will second that.
Motion by Sam Coffin?
I'd actually like number seven pulled real quick. It should be a quick one.
That's fine.
Okay, so Sam, would you modify your?
Yep, that's fine. Items one through six.
Wait, items one through six?
I second one through six.
Okay, call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I have it. Number seven was asked to be pulled, Joe.
Yeah, I just, I was looking in, in the Halloween hours that we're, that we're proposing our five to seven. And I just wanted to confirm that that is consistent with what we have done in the past. I was thinking it had been like four to six, but.
That was exactly what was done last year.
Perfect.
So that's the only reason I went up there.
That's all I need then. So I'll move to approve trick-or-treating hours, five to seven PM on Monday, October thirty-first.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Any other comments? Call the question.
Chris, are you doing full-size candy bars?
I am bottom today.
I am bottom today. Five to seven gives you time to dress up.
Okay. Call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. All right. That takes care of consent agenda. Okay, next we have approve amended temporary Class B, Class B retailers license application for Wildcat Youth Hockey Association for the Wildcat Classic at Ice Pond, one-one-one-zero Prairie View Drive on October twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-two. Tom?
Well, open, as you tabled at the last meeting, open to continuing that discussion. I believe last week, or a couple of weeks ago, Carla made the presentation regarding the general review that the police department and clerks department had completed on the application, as is typical on all Class B application requests, and found no reason in their review administratively to suggest denial of the license. And at that point, there was additional discussion that we're, that we're familiar with. I do know that we notified the hockey association that they could have a representative speak on the topic during this item. Was that something that you wanted to do? Is there someone representing? Okay.
Can both of us? We're both on the application?
I, I don't know how.
Can you both speak?
Yeah.
Not at the same time, but yes.
So if you want to afford that opportunity as a board, and then I think Brian could probably touch base on some of the logistics regarding the process for taking the next steps with license consideration.
Could you just state your name and your address for the record?
Yes, my name is Todd Swenson, and it's nineteen oh-one Tierney Drive. Want to keep? All right. Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak tonight. My name is Todd Swenson, as I just stated. I'm the president of the Wildcat Youth Hockey Association. And at the risk of being redundant, I would like to offer some background to the event and address some of the issues that were brought up at the last board meeting. Wildcat Classic is a manual event, which has received the Class B liquor, temporary liquor license for the, for the past several years, dating back to two thousand seventeen, the exception of two thousand twenty due to COVID restrictions. There have been no incidents at our event in the past. This includes incidents regarding alcohol. The Classic is, is a kickoff to our hockey season, and it's for our association and our association only. No outside organizations attend the event. The gameplay is not your typical hockey game where there are two teams playing end to end. So it's not this team against this team with everybody in the stands cheering for each other. We have three games going concurrently next to each other in a cross-assance fashion, where it's three on three and teammates are playing teammates. The older kids referee for the younger kids during this. So you've got your fourteen U or your twelve-year, twelve U's players refereeing for the eight U, the ten U, and the six U. It's somewhat silly for the kids, because it is different, but it's a fun game for them to play. The kids play four games during the day. Teams are rotated out at a much quicker interval than a standard game. These are teammates versus teammates. And the reason why I illustrate this is because this isn't a bunch of parents just sitting around like they're sitting at a bar watching a hockey game, drinking. They're continuously moving. They're helping their kids get their equipment on, get their equipment off. We've got schedules, commute, et cetera. I also bring this up to illustrate the atmosphere reflects the gameplay. It's lighthearted and fun. Parents have time to sit together, chat, and catch up with each other. It's a vehicle to build camaraderie and community within our association. This isn't a bunch of fiery hockey dads fueled by alcohol yelling and screaming. On the contrary, it's a social gathering of friends who may or may not have seen each other in the off-season. Now, the off-season is continuously being blended into a full season year-round, but you get my point. We consider the association a family, and I mean that sincerely. I believe every hockey, youth hockey association feels the same way about their association or organization. Hockey is a long season, drudging through the weather for several months. It's demanding on both time and resources with a lot of built-in travel. If you know any hockey families that have hockey players with them, if you ask them, I'm sure that they'll tell you the same. What we are asking is to allow us to use our venue, the Ice Pond, which we live at for a large part of the year, to host our gathering while fundraising for scholarships to those who may not be able to play hockey without financial assistance. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Alyssa Greiber. My address is two four oh-nine Galick Street. I am a Wildcat Hockey Board member and the tournament director and the fundraising coordinator, fundraising director. And I just wanted to clarify a few things that got brought up last meeting that we didn't have representation to acknowledge. This has previously been a two-day tournament, or a two-day, two-day event, it's not a tournament, and we have consolidated it to one day. And we have changed, our schedule is done, so our hours are nine AM to five-thirty PM. And I won't reiterate why we're wanting to have alcohol, because everybody else has done it. One of the concerns was how we were going to make sure that only twenty-one plus are in the area to get alcohol. And we have the area roped off in the map that you'll receive in the application. And we have, we plan to have a person standing at the entrance to that, and then we'll also have two, for lack of better terms, bartenders that will be serving the beer. And it's all canned beer. There's no liquor, and there's no, like, giving people larger portions of beer. IDs will be checked at all times. The last time it said, check for the first hour at the door, and then the remaining time would be checked by the bartenders. The second piece, I think, was missed last time. But IDs will be checked the entire time, and we have wristbands that people will get before they're served a beverage. Nobody under the age of twenty-one will be allowed in the area. So kids can't go in there and get their parents. They can yell from outside the ropes if they want to. We do have about four volunteers that have agreed to work the entire day into our shifts. So it's a smaller number of people that will have to kind of curtail, to teach them or remind them how to check IDs and make sure that they are adamant about checking IDs and getting people out of there if they're not twenty-one. I also put in the amendment that I would create signage, just like bars have, that say what the date is, the youngest date that somebody can be in the bar, or actually, not even in the bar, if you serve alcohol. So we will do that, and we will have a ton of signage that lists twenty-one plus. And we will also be getting additional responsible parties that will be at the Ice Pond in the bar area that is located away from where the skaters will get on and off the ice, so it's completely opposite sides of the ice rink. I'd be happy to address any additional questions, if anybody has any questions.
Okay. They might. I don't, I don't know the answer to that, so we're gonna, we'll have a discussion. Brian, did you want to talk first?
It's really up to you all as to whether or not you want me to give you more background, or if you just want to start your discussion and ask some questions, however you'd like to proceed.
I think we'll just start our discussion. Is that okay with you guys?
Sure.
Everybody?
Want me to start? Sure. When they brought this up last meeting, I had a quick knee-jerk reaction that I apologized for, and then we decided, hey, let's let them present their story. I did a little research. I talked to a lot of people. I talked to some people that have been involved in this in the past. And I've decided that they did a good job in the past with it, and I'm inclined to believe that they'll do a good job with it in the future. Now, I know that's contrary to some people that don't like the use of beer, et cetera, and et cetera, but it, it does, since this is more of a party atmosphere and more family and et cetera, it's not people driving from out of town and et cetera, I, I'm inclined to treat it a little bit different than if it was an outright tournament, where we got a lot, you know, people traveling long distances and everything. And since it's more of a party, I think it's probably, I would, I would go along with it.
Okay, in my normal spirit and fashion. Aaron?
Thank you all for presenting. And I, I really appreciate the supplemental info. I think my biggest concern last time was the IDs only being checked the first hour. I thought it was inappropriate, so I appreciate the, more info on the training and the signage and et cetera. Hopefully, that can create the environment for people to make the choice that they're going to. It's also helpful to get info on the actual event. I'm not super familiar, so it's, makes it very clear that it's not a competitive, sitting around watching two schools play against each other. It's, the reality for me is like, I'm, I'm involved in another expensive sport. Like, you have to run these programs, and people like this bringing in money is how it makes these programs more accessible to parts of our community that benefit from sports. And it's not ideal, but it's also, the hockey community has done a lot for Wannakee and provides great things for a lot of families. And so I think this can be a good thing for your program. So, thanks for all the info.
Gary?
Someone like Phil, I think the last time it was reasoned, it's a little bit more like it was going to be this tournament, and people were coming in from all over. And I'm on three boards that seems like all we do is fundraise all year long. And I know how difficult it is. And so does Phil, and so does Chris, and I'm sure other board members here. I mean, it's difficult, and you got, it's a full-time job. Because what you're doing it for is, you know, they're trying to help kids who can't afford to skate, which, you know, I applaud them for. You know, we do it in our other committees in town to help, you know, every, every group that, that needs. I mean, that's why you raise money, to help people. So, you know, Adam, you know, has kind of given his approval. We haven't had issues in the past. You know, I think they have, you know, God, I know their heart's in the right place, and I know they'll do a good job. And if the vote doesn't go your way, I know a group in town that'll help fund that for you. So, but I'm, I'm here to support them.
Joe?
I, I would say that my position on this has not really changed since our last meeting. I think I was kind of in the minority last time, but doesn't sound like it's necessarily that way anymore. I, I think the, the fundraising is a critical part of what you're doing. I'm still not overly comfortable with the fact that we've got an alcohol license and a lot of kids there. Obviously, it's, you know, in segregated areas, and, and that's all good. I, I would love to, I guess, just encourage parents to make sure that they drink responsibly. You know, have the, the talks with their kids, you know, help them understand really what's going on there. And that if they're going to drink alcohol in the future, you know, do that responsibly. Don't be driving. Don't, you know, binge drinking is such a terrible thing on campuses and all that. So I would encourage those conversations to happen, you know, either at the hockey thing or just within families outside of, of that venue. So. But aside from that, I'm, I'm supportive of what you're trying to do here. And I guess that's about it.
Al?
Okay, first of all, I will say I regret not catching this when it was previously on the agenda packets when I first got on the board. And I was negligent in that way. And I'm not singling any group out. When I saw this, I was literally very concerned, because it's a youth group. What's going to happen if we, if we knowingly approve this with T-ball, youth baseball, youth soccer, the list goes on and on? Are we opening, opening a Pandora's box? That's what's going through my mind right now. I will say that I know firsthand that alcohol issues don't only affect the person that is consuming the alcohol. It's also their families and other people that they come in contact with, and this can be for life, and it can cause a lot of issues. I do have a couple of questions, though. One is for the hockey group. How many students have scholarships? And what, how mu, how big of a scholarship is it, and how much of the cost is it defray from the program?
So we give anywhere from zero to five each year. Last year, we gave out one. I think in the previous year before that, we gave out two. Our most expensive group is about fifteen hundred dollars a year. That would be the bantam group. So I mean, that would be, that, that would be the, the largest scholarship that we would give out. We do budget for that every year and keep a, you know, keep a supply. We try to keep it at five thousand dollars starting out every year. This, this allows us to, to do that plus some, so.
Okay. And then I have a question for staff. What hours is alcohol served at Wannafest in Wannaboo?
I don't know that off the top of my head, but I could pull up the.
I can tell you for one of them.
Okay.
It's two to nine-thirty.
Two to nine-thirty, okay.
Well, Wannafest typically will, four-thirty till about eleven on Friday and Saturday night, and Sunday, about eleven o'clock to four.
Okay.
We'll start at eleven on Saturday.
With the beer tasting?
Yeah, I guess, yeah, that's right.
So around eleven.
About eleven.
Okay. So I just wanted that piece of information. So.
Sure.
And that, that's it. Thank you.
Sam?
The concerns I had regarding IDs and the time of starting have been taken care of, so I don't have any more problems with it. I would suggest, just in the future, having some non-alcoholic beer choices, just what's popular that they're getting. Certainly, you got a short timeframe now, but in the future, but I don't have any problems with it. You know, initially, I was concerned. Looking up on Google, I saw things about a Wildcat Classic tournament, which made me really nervous. And the hours starting a little earlier than they had in the past made me fairly concerned. But I'm happy to support it now that I'm aware of what it actually is.
Okay, so I have quite a few notes, so I'll, I'll try to be brief, because it's, it's already eight-thirty. This is a long board meeting for us, to be honest. Just putting it out there.
It's on you.
So it's on me. So first, to our Wannakee Community Care Coalition, you're probably not hearing things you want to hear right now. But what I'll say is that I was the person that came onto the board as a young person and immediately went for a smoking ban in the community. So that was, that was one of the first things I did. We got it implemented. The state actually implemented right before ours was going to go into effect. But to give a little perspective on that, I appreciate where you're coming from, one hundred percent. Within this, I think our, our community is no different than most communities in, in all reality. There's, whether it be TV to whatever that people are watching, you're going to see different things with alcohol or tobacco or drugs in general, which is fortunate or unfortunate, depending on how you look at it. Is it an educational thing, or is it just, all right, that's the social norm. I should be accepting that and doing that. That's not great in that situation. Some of the suggestions for our group within this. I just had an event at my employer, and WCC participated in that event. We had red wristbands and green wristbands. Okay? The red meant no alcohol. We put that on everybody. We had one of each. So we had green on those who could drink and red on those who couldn't drink. It helped us to figure out our attendance, too, by the way, for how many people we had there. Very, very easy way for us to do it. Kids, no problems putting it on, especially if they got something for that wristband for going somewhere. Okay? If you've got something for them that you can give them. Our group is about safety over here, and I think that's my suggestion, is you guys have already been taking that tack with the other events, as you talked about, and trying to make that a safe and, and an environment that kids understand it a little better, but also we're making sure that they're not getting involved in those things. So working together, it sounds like you, the groups have connected already, so that, that, in my opinion, is the first start, just like I kind of talked about earlier. Something has to happen for it to get more into, into the norm. And I think that's what your group is about. Safety for kids and having them understand the problems that can be associated with any drugs and/or alcohol. To the group, I, I agree with everything that the hockey group said, with the exception of, I wouldn't take a tack of ever, and I'm not saying you all did this, but I would never take the tack of telling the, the village board that it's going to get sued. The village board can get sued for anything at any time, for whatever reason. Okay? And, and don't, don't, don't get defensive about it. I'm just, I'm just saying that before you, we, we made sure that you had an opportunity to speak, which is a great thing, because what's coming from this, from what I can tell, is that I, I think things are going to go. is that I, I think things are going to go how you're hoping. I, I'm just putting that from my observation from, as a board member, to have that said to us. Let's see here. You're doing all the different things that are great, you're fencing off the area, making sure people are being checked. No kids are in the area. As a matter of fact, if you have the red and the green, I, I'm not even opposed to the kids going into the area. Because they can see the parents that are acting responsibly in there, too. There's going to be parents that aren't acting responsibly at times. I don't think this is an event that that's going to be the case, though, so...
Agreed, since this is a private event, that, right, the private-ish, at least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Within that, so, with that, um, I don't think we need, I, I mean, I don't think we need your advice on this one, but...
It doesn't sound like it, I would just, Nyla made a comment at the last meeting of somehow, at some point in time, putting on the board agenda, kind of a policy discussion as to what factors do you want to look at when you're considering these? I would suggest that so that, because I think that would be a valuable discussion for the board.
Thank you, Brian.
Okay. So with that, I'd look for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the application for a temporary Class B license for Wildcat Youth Hockey Association for the Wildcat Classic at the Ice Pond, 1110 Prairie View Drive on October 29, 2022.
I'll second.
Oh, you can have it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Okay, call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion passes.
Can I just have one thing noted, is that we, as the organization, did not use those words that we were going to sue you?
Absolutely, you're right, it was not, it was not the organization, it was somebody at the meeting tonight that brought up.
So, sorry about that, that was not our intent, so.
Yeah, understood, understood.
Right, thank you.
Thank you for your turn of thought.
Thank you.
All right.
Maybe we should still don't do that.
But we're not done.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. You were scrabbling your notes so hard, and I'm like, I got it all right here, you can just keep this one. You got it?
She's done it.
All right.
Like I said, I saw, I was like, oh, I got it all right there. Every, every, all the whole presentation.
It could be vodka, you never know.
Understood.
I clean this every couple of days, but then with the ice.
I don't think I made any notes that probably shouldn't be in there. It's all good. No, I, I just highlight, I highlight certain things. It'll be a different article, I guess, now.
Tribune subscriptions skyrocket.
Okay.
I want the drawing again, I got it in my car.
Nyla, I'm not done.
It's not time to go yet.
All right, the crowd mostly left, for the camera audience.
They're tired.
Waiting for them to leave, okay.
You and the Rover.
Number two.
Number two, oh, yes!
Take action on lease agreement with Wanakee Neighborhood Connection related to former library building. Uh, I don't know that we're going to need to go into closed session, but are we going to need to know?
It's also not noticed to go into closed session.
It is, isn't it?
No, it's not.
It's not noticed.
There's the asterisk.
Yeah.
But there's no...
Oh, you didn't...
One asterisk.
That's right, we weren't going to go into closed session, anyway.
All right, that, not you, that...
There's, there's no language, there's an asterisk, but there's no language at a...
Yeah, and we're fine, we, I don't think there was any intent in our...
Okay. Brian, are you talking on this one?
I can, I mean, I can just tell you that it's, the, the lease is part of the, your packet. It essentially takes the same form as the lease that you've already approved with the food pantry, with a few changes here and there, and the only thing I would say is, as you look at it, you'll notice there are some blanks in it, so I think the recommended motion is one that we've done before, for if you're going to approve it, you know, give Todd and me the ability to make some, you know, I would say, non-substantive changes to the document.
And I'd add that Lisa Huminek is your director of WNC, and are, are you prepared to touch base on WNC's progress on considering the space?
Yes, absolutely, so I just, I came from our board meeting, which was a little bit late for this one, but we have gotten almost all of the cost estimates that we were seeking in order to make the decision. Just have two outstanding things that we're waiting on, but they're pretty minor compared to the overall plan for the building. And at our board meeting tonight, everyone there is in consensus that, that we'd like to make the move. We were missing three board members, but they also felt that this should be a unanimous decision, so they're just pushing it out to do a phone call two weeks from now in hopes that we have those last two final estimates in and those other three board members that can be part of the discussion.
So, and you're happy with the, the agreement and everything?
We are, yeah, what still, I think, needs to be worked out is what as-is condition means and what, yeah, what work the village will do versus what we'll be doing. But Creative Business Interiors has been putting proposals together for both of us, so.
The lease, Nyla, went back and forth a couple of times, and there were some redlined suggested changes that Brian and I reviewed that WNC proposed. That's what's in your packet, we're comfortable with those.
Okay.
All right, I'm going to make the motion to approve the lease agreement between the Wanakee Neighborhood Connection and the village, subject to final review and approval by the village administrator and village attorney.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No, I don't have to fix that floor.
Anybody want it?
I'll move to adjourn.
Second.
Do adjourn. Second. Call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just have it. You out?